Provide the opportunity to share your views. Thank you.
Yes.
I think he did this one as a, I got, yeah, a little bit.
No, I shot a rubber band.
I was gonna say, I didn't see it. I was, I'm watching my. I did. Was I too, too fast? Mm-hmm. Yep.
Again, if you want to make a public comment during the public hearing, or during the comments section of citizens, please fill out a blue card. You can hand it up to us up front and we'll go through them during that time.
Yeah, I didn't hit it apparently. I get interrupted. So now we have to wait. Well, oh, I know, because I, I thought he said.
Thank you.
Got something out. And so I turned my head away.
Judy?
In the middle of, yeah, and I didn't click it.
Is it Judy?
It should come up any second.
Yes, right, I'm gonna introduce you.
Like I usually do.
Didn't look at the last man. Oh, great. Thank you, sir.
What do you think? Should I try it again? All right, I'll stop. By starting.
Are we good, Diane?
No.
We're having a little computer glitch. As soon as that's taken care of, we'll move forward. So far, I have about four cards. Again, if you'd like to talk, please fill out a blue card.
Unless I have to close out and come back in. Oh, wait, now this is streaming here. But it's. Before it start, yeah, now it's.
All the emails we got on this?
I have a couple of questions.
I'm not sure why it's, usually that comes first. Oh, okay, I'll stop, I'll close. Okay, let's try it again. Yeah.
I've got a few STDs.
So. That's interesting, that's different. I didn't have that before. I don't know where that's coming from. Let's just see what happens.
Yes.
I don't recall ever seeing that before. Now it's recording here. Unless I have to completely close out the on-base minutes and open that up again. Oh, wait, streaming. Now we got it. Okay, now it's working.
You're good to go?
Yes, we are good to go.
I'd like to call to order the City of Oconomok Council, Common Council meeting for Tuesday, January 18th, 2022. Has appropriate meeting notification been made?
Yes, Your Honor, it has.
We could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder, Alderman Shellpepper.
Here.
Alderman Kavieski.
Here.
Alderman Douglas.
Here.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Zapple.
Here.
Alderman Ellis, Alderman Spiegelberg. All righty.
Okay, we're gonna move on to open a public hearing on the Olympia Fields planned development. Mr. Gallo, can you start us off, please?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have a public hearing on the agenda this evening. This is a request for the creation of a zoning planned development overlay. The purpose is to give some flexibility for a project called Olympia Fields Development. The site consists of 46 acres in size. It's up on the screen right now. I hope all of your screens are on. The developer's asking for six different zoning exemptions. With that said, Matt Maroni is here. He's with Wongard Partners. He is the applicant, and he is going to walk through this. To avoid a lot of duplication, I'll have him explain it. I'll be available during the meeting to answer any zoning-related questions that you may have.
After the explanation, we'll go through the folks that have targeted or want to go after this type of discussion. And when you come up to the podium, we're gonna give you a maximum of three minutes. If you can try to come to your point, share your viewpoints about this development with all the council members, and then this will be debated and discussed later in the council meeting among the council members. So it's a one-way discussion, and it's a way for you to give your input to the council members. Mr. Maroni.
Thank you, Matt Maroni with President Wongard Partners. So this evening, I am here before you to make some requests for some flexibility for this development as we go forward. So one of the reasons why we're here is because we were successful in purchasing the property that the city had taken by eminent domain. And so we're in the process of master planning that property. In the, as, as we were going through this as well, we had the privilege of working with our anchor tenant, who I think all of you saw today, will be Sundex. And we're talking to them about some of the flexibilities that, that they may need for their parcel as we're working through this, as we go forward, so. So overall, here is kind of the revised site plan. So you'll notice that in the previous plans and all the renderings that you've had before, you've had, you know, kind of where the city land was, just vacant land. That was not, you know, under our control, so we did no planning for it. So now you'll see, you know, a couple of different buildings there to the northwest of the roundabout. You know, we would propose to have a four to five-story building, first floor retail, with maybe a couple of them having a second story of retail, and then apartments up above. Thank you for the pointer. You will also notice there's some buildings, just kind of placeholders in the outlots there along Highway 67, you know. And, and then also a larger building that kind of straddled our property and the property we purchased from the city, that we moved the medical office building from over where the Kmart was, over to that location. So those would be the, you know, kind of the major plan revisions since the purchase of the property. So we heard loud and clear throughout this, you want a white, walkable, bikeable, connected community. And so this highlights, you know, all the sidewalks, trails, paths, to try to really encourage that to happen. And a lot of our requests tonight are actually trying, in an effort to try to take advantage of those features, and try to enhance it and encourage that even to a greater extent. So the first exemption that we're calling for is a building height exemption. We think it'd be important for this development, as you come in, to have, you know, kind of a prominent feature as we go forward. So the buildings highlighted in purple are the ones where we're seeking to have some flexibility with the height. Right now, the principal structure, maximum foot for height is 50. We'd like to move that to 65 feet. We think this will allow us to have some flexibility, design some interesting buildings, with some rooftop feature on probably at least one of them. The second request that we're making is a setback request. We're asking to have a little bit of flexibility to reduce the setback requirements in certain areas. You can see in the light blue, we're asking to move the setback from 15 feet to five. In this area in particular, we want to try to take advantage of, you know, the traffic flow situation and use, you know, these buildings to help slow traffic through the roundabout, to make it safer. We also want to create a feature between the two buildings, an outdoor patio-type thing that we think would be, you know, attractive as people enter into the area. We're also requesting in purple, a side yard setback. Originally, that request, we thought, well, it still is necessary for the sundex, because we're gonna be dividing the building in half. And so we want to have the flexibility to, in that area, you know, divide the property the, the way that it's proposed right there. And then we have a dual front yard setback there along Highway 67. The area there in yellow, we want to move the buildings five feet closer. Once again, to try to take advantage of the bike path that's existing there and to pull, you know, people into development in that area. So the next request is regarding uses. So we would like to, the buildings in purple, as we described, first floor, possibly a second floor of retail, and then apartments above. We would estimate, you know, about 80 apartments max, you know, for, for that area. We'd have underground parking in that, in those two buildings that would be connected underground parking. They would go in through the north and then exit out the west in that area. And right now, you know, we want the flexibility to allow residential use, a mixed use, for that particular parcel. The next one is parking. From a parking standpoint, we have large parking fields out there. We're taking a look at the, the, the uses, and we would like to reduce the parking from one parking space per 250 foot, 250 square feet, to one for every 350 square feet. You know, just to create more flexibility, you know, create, you see some street trees, create a, create a different kind of look out there, to be able to do that. We have worked very closely with our anchor tenant to make sure that they're comfortable with this parking approach. And I believe they, I've shared a letter with the city that they are supportive of this request as well. So in this area, once again, it's just some relief from parking. We have multiple uses that have different standards for parking in this area. And we believe that we're gonna have ample parking in this area for the different uses at the different times that are needed. And so we would like a little bit of relief here that we're, we're allowed to kind of load the parking lot, you know, based on those two uses and the, the timing of those uses. And then the last, I think this is the last one. As far as request, this is side yard setbacks. So we want in certain areas to reduce the side yard setbacks to zero. Actually, there's one more after this, to zero. Reason being, especially in the area outlined in yellow, you know, along Highway 67, north and east of the roundabout, in that area right there, we would like to try to encourage sharing of parking lots. I think as well, possible sharing of driveways, just to create some flexibility there for different types of users to, to share, and, and those sorts of needs for their particular businesses. And I, and I think, you know, I should also note that we're not proposing to change the open space requirements at all. I think with this, we can actually do a better job on open space with this kind of flexibility as, as we move forward, so. So that would be the request, and you'll see, you know, kind of the two other areas, once again, between the anchor tenant, sundex, and the other buildings, we need that kind of flexibility. And then between, you know, the, the proposed apartments and the proposed medical office buildings. And then this one is our last request. So this would be our terrace areas, paved, paved areas, setback from the terraces. So you can see that we're, we're requesting reduce it from five to zero, five feet to zero, in these areas. This is something, again, that we're looking to do to give us flexibility. It wouldn't occur in all of these locations, but for particular uses that want to try to attract people off of the walking paths or the bike trails into, you know, those establishments, we think that kind of flexibility will add to the vibrancy of the development. So that is the reason for that request. So that in brief summary is what we are proposing to do.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing. Judy Taylor. When you please come up to the podium, please state your name, your address, and what community you live in, please.
Good evening. My name is Judy Taylor. I live in the town of Oconomok. And thank you for allowing me to be here tonight, Mayor and Common Council. I'm the Executive Director for the Waukesha County Center for Growth. We are the economic development arm for Waukesha County, and I've seen you all before. So appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to, to support Olympia Fields and this project. We know that this particular project is not only gonna be great for this community, but certainly will be great for our region. As we talk about regional economic development, we know this will draw a lot of people, not only from the city limits, but all throughout the county, as well as cross-county in the region. So I'll continue to support the project in any way I can and work with Matt and Stu and the Wongard team, as well as Bob Duffy and others, to not only drive opportunities this way, to attract different tenants and others, to be able to make this as best of a community and vibrant place that it can be. So, you know, please know that I have that effort in mind, and we'll do everything we can as a county and an academic development arm to support those efforts. So thank you so much for your time and really appreciate the energy you're putting in to make this a great, a great place in Waukesha County. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ralph Redlin.
Good evening. My name is Ralph Redlin. I live in Heartland. My wife and I own a timeshare condo in Oconomok, and I am, in fact, the Treasurer of the Vacation Owners Association, which Board of Directors has met at length and discussed this project myriad times over the last year. Our Board of Directors is made up of people from Colorado, Chicago, excuse the reference, as far away as North Carolina, Florida. People from all over the United States are interested in what's going on in our area because the timeshare has struggled to retain members. However, in the last year, we have seen a significant uptick in interest in our membership and an uptick in interest in acquiring units in our development, principally because of Olympia Fields. And reports that Yvonne McGavick, who is our Executive Director, and I, who live closest, have been giving. I've been in occasional meetings with Matt Maroni, and I will say that, having been a practicing public accountant with a specialty in construction industry, there are a few people who communicate as quickly and as well with me. Even the clients didn't communicate as quickly and as well often as Matt has. In particular, we are thrilled at the development of the baseball area. I shared that with Judy earlier. But we are exceptionally thrilled with the way Olympia Fields is moving ahead. There are a few things that Matt has talked about. The walk paths are especially interesting to our visitors from around the United States to Oconomok. They want to be able to hike to get to these shopping areas and these other supporting enterprises. The setback, the setback requirements that he's asking about, he and I have never talked about. But on reflection of that, it looks to me like if we go walking along there, it might be wise to have a fairly proximate ability to get into the businesses that are right along there. All in all, I would say that this is a huge positive development for our project, for its future, for the people that visit this project, and for the City of Oconomok. That's our opinion as a couple invested, and my opinion, representing the Board of Directors of the Vacation Owners Association, Inc. of Olympia. Thank you again for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do not have any further blue cards for the public hearing. A topic on Olympia Fields, I have one that we'll bring forth during the comments section from citizens on another topic. Do we have any further comments from the public on this topic? Anyone else would like to share anything for the public hearing?
Do you want us, as point of order, Mayor, do you want us to ask questions of Matt then later when we vote?
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Or, or of Jason?
Yeah, later. Any further comments? Okay, at this point, the public hearing is now closed. Thank you very much. We'll move on to our next item, approval of minutes for January 4th, 2022. Did you catch that, Diane?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
On to comments and suggestions from citizens. I have one comment card. Julie Naku, Nanku? I'm not sure if I'm reading it properly. Will you please state your name and where you live?
Yes, my name is Julie. I'm on 537 Greenland. And I came earlier tonight to hear the conversation regarding the library. And I just wanted to show up as a resident and speak to my support of the library and that they think they're an exceptional resource to our community and that they've done a great job of making sure that they're fulfilling their mission statement and really creating an environment and a community that enriches all. And so I just wanted to come out here tonight to say that, that it's really important that we do have members in our community, that the books that were discussed tonight are highly important, too, and definitely enrich the lives of individuals specifically in this community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other comments from citizens? We'll then move on to our next item, Olympia Fields update. Mr. Maroni is gonna, as planned, going to give us an update as to where we are currently and where this is going. Thank you, sir.
Something wrong with the, hit what? All right, I think, uh, thank you again. Matt Maroni with Wongard Partners. As promised, we indicated we'd come in with regular updates. We thought this was appropriate time to come in and provide an update. So my friends at the Vacation Owners provided me this, this editorial that was in the Waukesha Freeman, which I thought, or cartoon, editorial cartoon, that I thought was appropriate, right? Hey, this won't be easy, but I think we can revive them. Well, they didn't revive them, and this isn't easy. You know, we're still dealing with a lot of legacy issues that I'll talk about as we go through here. But with the partnership of the city, we're, we're making great progress. We're really excited about, you know, the, today's announcement. And we have more to come in the weeks ahead, so we're, we're rolling. So a quick recap of demolition. It started on 4/26. Took us a little longer till September 30th till we were completed. A lot of that is because we found a lot of environmental surprises, you know. And we handled those surprises, working hand-in-hand with the DNR. You know, when we found a surprise, my first phone call was to the DNR, and like, how do you want us to handle this? Right? We want to be good corporate citizens and, and do what's right. But we found an area where we had a parking lot on top of buried asbestos walls, on top of a parking lot with an underground storage tank to the side. So a lot of good, fun stuff as we're going forward. As a result, our costs were up significantly higher than what we'd even put in for a contingency. But that's our responsibility, that's our risk for the project. And then 27% of the demolition cost was related to abatement, which was significantly higher.
They didn't have to disclose to you that there was a storage tank?
Well, I think there's lots of things out there that weren't disclosed back. So, uh, so one of the goals with, with this project is to track apprenticeship hours and Waukesha County companies and safe working environments. You guys were insistent, Alderman Zapple particularly, on having those in the developers' agreement. So those are in there, so we tracked those. So blew way past the apprenticeship hours, and a lot of that had to do with environmental apprentices doing the environmental abatement. We used four Waukesha County-based companies in the demolition. You know, with the lead company being New Berlin Grading, right, with the owner right here in Oconomok. Our, our biggest thing that we're pleased about, no injuries, no accidents. This was not a safe building to take down the way it was built. And so we had involved a lot of structural engineers to help guide us along the way, and thankfully, very successful from that standpoint. We tried to salvage as much as we can, recycle as much as we can, and then you all can still see the huge crushed concrete that we will reuse. So here is the apartment real quick. So right away, we started working on site work and grading. Everything's on track. We will have our first apartment building open by June 1st. With the clubhouse, we open at the same time, June 1st. And then every six weeks thereafter, we'll have another building come online with completion date of February 2023. Despite all the material shortages that we're facing, we're finding alternatives. We're still on time. Just a site plan. You know, we added the one building, what I call in the, in the little area where the theater was, that was part of the parcel that we bought from the city. So that's part, yeah, right there, part of that building was formerly on city land. We closed on that little parcel in October, just to keep the construction rolling. Just a rendering, nothing's really changed. You've seen this in the past. Our interiors, kind of, that's kind of what, what it'll kind of look like on the interior. Here's just some current photos on construction. These are a little old, probably two weeks, three weeks old. And people have asked about the retaining wall, and maybe I should clarify that real quick. So the resort was actually built kind of into, you know, that area. It was multi-level, and people, I don't think, really realized that. And so there's about a 15 different, 15-foot different grade from the very south end of this parcel to where the pond is. And so this retaining wall is necessary to provide structural security for, or integrity for the buildings that are going on past it. So this is a more updated picture. You can see the clubhouse is, is getting well under its way. You know, as well as the first apartment units. So construction costs, about $40 million. 50% of our subcontractors are Waukesha County contractors thus far. We're tracking apprenticeship hours. I don't have an update on that. We're using the Craftsman Design Standards, which I know is also important to the council. And once again, no accidents, no injuries so far. We have onsite safety instructions prior to the start. And the really positive thing is we've had a lot of inquiries already about people leasing. So it's, that's, shows us that there really is a grid market here. Just more statistics here for you. Nothing has changed. This is the project, the unit counts, types of units, because we've been getting more questions about that, so I thought it'd be good to put a slide in there so people have that information. And I think Mr. Duffy's gonna make this available, you know, after, so people can pull it down on the city website and get the information. So this is the partnership, right? We've been working on infrastructure together in the tax increment district. We, the city's investing about $11.2 million to install supporting infrastructure. Phase one has been well underway. And then we are, or Stu, not we, Stu, is guaranteeing that we will hit our investment goals. And we're real confident with the way things are going, we'll, we'll, we'll be very successful. So phase one infrastructure's complete, except sidewalks, Encaree's courts. We worked with the city, you know, at the time of the year, we just kind of thought, hey, it's best not to pave right now or right towards the end of the, the year. Plus, it allows us the opportunity to get more heavy equipment back there, you know, and not, you know, do any damage to the, the roads. So that'll go, those will be finished up in the spring. And then phase two infrastructure's gonna be very important to us. So coordination is gonna be key. We're impacting some of the businesses out there. So we're having with a joint session with the city to talk about phasing of construction, the plans with the business community. They've been invited this Thursday to walk through those issues and get their feedback and make sure everybody's, you know, knows what's going on. I think the plan we put together is good. I don't think anybody's gonna see, you know, major disruptions. I don't think anybody's going to see, you know, major disruptions. You know, access will be retained, but it'll be a little different in signage and communication is going to be absolutely important. The big thing is it's absolutely important we get this completed on time with the roundabout. Our anchor tenant needs to be in with functioning roads November 1st. They want to be operational. So I think everybody on the city staff and our staff are working together to make sure we hit that timeline. The most expensive part of the city work is this next phase, phase two. So we've been monitoring what's happening there, and we've had a little surprise. There's some additional work off-site that's being required by the Wisconsin DOT on Highway 67. And so kind of you can see those areas, they're kind of shaded with red outlines, you know, along Highway 67. That's where we need to add either turning lanes, adjust the roadways slightly. So that's the area where additional work will have to be done along Highway 67. So you heard me talk about it before, walkable, bikeable, connected. We've heard you loud and clear. Got a good trail system, you know, put in place. We're really happy about that as well. And we'll be working on the public art, the landscaping features, all that. You'll see that coming back here relatively soon as well for your review. So you're where we purchased it. I think the other important thing is there was concern about one of our neighboring property owners right there on Paps Road and Highway 67, and about maybe we might need some additional land from them. We were able to work with the DOT and city staff and design, you know, the road coming in from 67, Paps Road, in a manner that we were not required to take any property from that property owner. So mission accomplished. We weren't sure we were going to be able to do it. I couldn't promise we would be able to do it. I said we'd make our best efforts, and we were able to do it. So I'm happy to report that as well. And then we are working, you know, to remove, there's easements all over this property with different owners of the easements and beneficiaries of the easements. And we've had a lot of luck getting many of them removed voluntarily. We're still working on trying to get the last couple ones over the finish line. And then here, which is important to all of us, is the guaranteed minimum values, you know, and I'm confident, you know, we're well ahead of schedule of where we had thought we would be. Here's kind of a tentative timeline. So January, announce the major anchor, which is Sundex. We just did that today. You know, start work on the city infrastructure as early as March. You know, they're going to start as soon as they get their approvals, which I believe will be coming forward, you know, probably in March by the time they go through the planning commission and staff review and all that. The major anchor will start construction shortly thereafter. And then, like I said, October 15th, we'd like to be done with the infrastructure to give us time to allow a little bit of cushion. And then the occupancy of the Kmart building by Sundex by November 1st. We already talked about this in the public hearing, so I'll skip that. So here's the proposed elevations. So this would be the eastern elevation for Sundex, and then the proposed southern elevation for Sundex as well. You can see, quality-looking building. Here's a rendering showing what, you know, kind of a view looking to the northwest. Here's a view looking to the southwest. So we're, I can't tell you how excited we are about having Sundex. This will be one of their larger facilities, will be 60,000 square foot, that will be located here. So, and I will say, just based off today's announcements, we've had a lot of inquiries from other people that want to locate in the development. So in the next few weeks, we anticipate we'll have further announcements, and we'll start working through the approval process for several other things. So we're as happy as can be, very bullish that with our partnership with the city, we're going to be able to accomplish something pretty special here. So, but we've got to do the trails, art, wayfinding, pond improvements, and other wild factors that are important to the mayor and the rest of you. So that work will be done this year, but we have to get that kind of officially planned and ready to rock and roll. There you can see the picture of our team at Wongard. So everybody's really dedicated to this project. We're going to make it happen. We anticipate a 7,200-square-foot clinical building located on Highway 67 will be coming forward very shortly for you to review. We anticipate a financial institution on Highway 67, too, coming forward very soon. A national restaurant chain on Highway 67, probably coming soon. And then there's others, right, that we're working through as we go forward. So that's my brief update presentation. Want to kind of keep it quick, but really want to thank a lot of people that have worked hard on this. So, so the city administrator, your economic development director, your attorney, your finance staff. I mean, there's been a lot of teamwork to pull this off, and we could not, from Wongard's perspective, have better partners than the city of Oconomak. So thank you. So that's, end of my presentation.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any quick comments, or we'll move on to the next agenda item? Alderman Zappel?
Thank you, Mayor. Matt, thank you for the presentation and for the update. I really appreciate you coming to give the presentation today in regards to how things are going there. I'm wowed by the apprenticeship hours. That's amazing. It's fantastic. This past weekend, I was down at Pfizer Forum, and I was grabbing a beverage over at Good City Brewing, and I saw a guy with New Berlin excavating, quote un. He said, "I'm out there doing the work." He said, "Here's my son. He's an apprentice. He's about to buy his first car," he was saying, "so it's pretty exciting to hear that." And 50% of contractors from Wachshau County, that's amazing. We didn't even ask for any residency component of that. That's awesome. Those are dollars coming back to our community. They're being reinvested in our community. So that's amazing. So I just want to give you kudos for that, so.
Thank you so much. We look forward for the next update. Well, moving on to consent agenda items to set the trick and treat hours for Saturday, October 29th, 2022. I entertain a motion.
Don't move, Kavieski.
Second, Zappel.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next up on our topic, our committee reports. We're going to start off first with Consider Act on Staffing Changes for the Police Department. Chief Fister.
Tonight, before you, the staffing changes with the City of Oconomak Dispatch Center going over to WCC. We're looking for position changes. The five full-time dispatch positions and the six part-time dispatch positions will be eliminated upon that transfer. And I can tell you that everything's going very well with that transfer at this time. So what we are looking at, I will start with the first change that we're looking for is the police administrative assistant job. The only thing, change on this job is the job description, what they're going to be doing inside the police department and on there. The second one is the evidence and property custodian. That position was part-time clerk, part-time evidence custodian. We are not adding any new positions to the police department. These positions are existing. We're just changing what they're doing within the police department. And at this time, we see a great need to increase evidence and property, and that needs to be a full-time position within the police department. And then the last position is the police support specialist position. I'm asking for five full-time positions and three part-time positions. Those will be, keep us 24/7, 3/65 throughout the year, and we'll be able to staff for the community and keep our community safe and our officers safe. I'll entertain any questions.
Alderman Zappel?
Thank you, Chief, for the update here. In regards to the 24/7 operation, you mentioned in the committee this evening that for a community our size, you would recommend that we have 24/7. What are the surrounding communities doing in regards to this for their communities similar size?
It's hard. We're a unique community, and we're kind of that middle, that middle ground. But the other communities that did go over to WCC, such as Brookfield, Menominee Falls and so forth, do still continue to have a 24/7 access and workers there that can respond to answer phone calls and other things that go on throughout the 24-hour period.
Thank you. That was going to be a follow-up question. Thank you.
Alderman Rozak?
Thanks, Chief. Delafield and Summit have Sally ports and holding rooms, but they don't have 24/7 coverage, do they?
I know they don't have 24/7 coverage, correct.
But, you know, and they're a little bit smaller than us. Menominee Falls, New Berlin does. They're about twice as big as us, give or take. So we're kind of in that middle ground. I understand some of the difficulties there. But I do have a couple of questions about how you presented this, because I guess I'm confused. When we had, when we had full-time dispatch, we had five full-time dispatch, no, we had five full-time dispatchers and four part-time, right?
Five full-time and six part-time is what we current, what we had.
Okay. And we also, at that, at that point, we also had two administrative assistants, right?
We have one administrative assistant and one part-time clerk slash part-time evidence custodian.
Okay, and you said that at the, at the, at the committee meeting, which I didn't know. So the, this person that's the evidence property custodian is going full-time evidence property custodian, essentially?
Correct. They're full-time now. We're just going to change it to full-time evidence.
Gotcha. So what you're really asking for is an additional one person, essentially, one full-time position, right?
No.
Okay.
Because I had five dispatchers. I'm asking for five full-time specialists, and we'll still have our administrative assistant.
So you're not, it's not five new ones plus the first, the one, there's just five?
Oh, correct. Just five.
Because the study gave you, the study we voted on a while back said, and we adopted the findings of it, was four full-time staff and 1,500 part-time equivalent. So when we talk about the three part-time positions here, what's our FTE on that? 1,500 hours, 1,800 hours, 900 per person?
Well, we stay over 1,200, under 1,200 per person.
Okay, under 1,200. So there is, there will be some increase, but my understanding, too, is that the committee meeting, that you're still under budget based on this year's budget, which was adopt, last year's budget, which was adopted with full-time dispatch still?
Correct.
Do you anticipate budgetary issues next year with the staffing?
I don't. I mean, we're looking at a lot of different things. Obviously, I don't have a crystal ball, but I don't expect anything. You know, some of the other areas that were talked about in the study, you know, we're working on some of those contracts that were out there to, you know, filter some of those away and get better results on that. So, you know, I don't anticipate anything.
One other question I had, in the evidence and property custodian section of your report, you said that was mostly for body, well, you think you need more because of the expansion of the body camera thing, right?
Mostly, yes. I mean, our clerk spends a lot of time in there right now. We've seen a significant increase in the past two years of open records requests, and that's standard throughout law enforcement right now. And with the body cameras and the squad videos and everything else, we're going to get a lot of, lot more of that, and we have to do a lot of redacting on that as well. So I definitely see that as a full-time position within the department.
If, so if your evidence custodian position, though, in general, I mean, if they're, let's say this doesn't, you know, we get the body cameras, everything's in, you know, whenever. And they don't get the amount of requests, we think, are we going to still use that person in other clerk functions or data conversion or whatever else we need?
We'll evaluate it. I mean, it might be something we can move down to a 30-hour week, you know, or something like that. If they're not, if we're not needed that much, we can evaluate that and we can come back to the council in, you know, six months and say, here, this is where we are, we can lower this to 30 hours, you know, a week.
So I think I'm going to vote in favor of this. I do want to obviously keep a safe community. I appreciate your presentation. There are two, there's two concerns I have, and I do, I think this should be evaluated before October, our next budget cycle. Is one, the reason for the evidence property custodian increasing to full-time was the body camera stuff. So I think it'd be helpful for us to know August, September, has it really come to fruition once everything is installed? You know, we usually got 15 open records requests a month. We're still getting just 15. You know, it hasn't gone through the roof, and this person could be dropped down to 30 hours or 25. I think that's important for us to see.
Absolutely.
The other thing, I know, I know we went over and we discussed 24/7 at-night call center, and I know there's issues with that, but I, and I don't think it has to be addressed at all tonight. But I do, I would like a fair evaluation from your department, utilities, whoever. Is that something that really we need? Because we're in that, I agree with you, we're in that sweet spot. We're not Delafield, we're bigger than Delafield, we got more going on, we're bigger size-wise. But we're not New Berlin, and Menominee Falls that border Milwaukee County, has a lot of spillover from Germantown and Milwaukee and West Dallas and stuff. So I'd like a fair, at some point, a really good evaluation of what those third part, you know, those third shift clerks are really doing. And how many utility calls are they taking? Is it five, you know, 15 a night, or is it one? You know?
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to definitely track all that. We weren't tracking that, but we will start tracking all of that. And I guarantee, we'll come, if, we don't have stuff for a third, third shift person, we'll come back here and I'll tell you that.
Well, and then, yeah, but Ian, I, the reason I'm going to probably vote in favor of this tonight is because I have, my number one concern is someone there to monitor the video cameras when there's people.
Which is mine, as well.
And, and I know that, and I don't want to take that away from you guys. My understanding is if you bring in a person to book, there's typically two officers with that person anyway, right?
Correct.
So you have two officers in there. I understand the concerns of, though, if somebody becomes unruly or there's more than one in there, it can be an issue. So I don't want to take that away from you, but I do, I really encourage you and utilities to evaluate, you know, what we can do to change maybe some of this if we get there. I think that's part of why we did the dispatch changeover as well, although not the primary reason. We have, we have the ability to maybe make some changes, also technologically. You know, we do the parking stuff where people still call in for parking. We need to go to an app-based parking program. They have them all around the country, where they pay a small fee, they get their overnight parking permit on their phone, and it goes into our system and our guys see it or get a printout, you know, that morning or whatever. And, and call centers, too. I think we can do some issues, some things to address the utility calls at night. I know that's not instantaneous, and you got a lot on your plate because you're doing the conversion. I get it. So I appreciate it. I know I had a lot of questions. Thanks.
Thank you.
Alderman Mulder?
So I should have brought this up in committee, and I apologize for that, but Alderman Shellpepper brought up some good points that we were talking about. So when the original, the original report we had when we switched over from the consultant was about 180 hours a week is what they anticipated needing to do 24/7, and that is what they recommended. Now, 168 hours in a week, if I'm doing the math right, that seems pretty light to me to only have that little bit, because you need backup for lunches and shift switch and stuff like that. What you're proposing takes us to more like 250 a week. So that's, that's 33% more than, than what was recommended. I don't know if that number's right or wrong. I don't have anything to reference that, but that seems like a big increase from where they were. Do you, are we?
And we had a discussion with the study about that. And when you start adding in vacation time, sick time, comp time that they earn, FMLA and all these other things that are out there, and we actually started, we plotted this all out, numerous schedules, you know, we looked at different scheduling, changing hours, doing everything to try and make the four work. The five, it comes out almost, almost perfect with five. Once we look at all of that and we compared that, you know, to what we had in the past as well. So the other difficult part is they're putting a number on part-time there. Those hours might not be the most favorable hours that are going to be available. So you also have to look at that as well, is how do we get somebody, you know, there certainly could be people out there that want to work 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM, you know, in our center, you know, and so forth. But it's a difficult process. So I assure you that, you know, we looked at it, and talking to Matrix as well, they said, yeah, it was probably a little light, you know, on their side, you know, for that, because when I said, well, we got X amount of hours, and that means we need so much. So I, I think we're there. I don't think, right now, we're going to be overstaffed. But if we are, I have no problem coming back here and telling you that, so.
Thanks. Sure.
Alderman?
Alderman Kowieski?
One of the things we talked about in committee too was, and we've talked about over the last several years, regards to what, uh, kind of calls come in with utility. And I've had some conversations with, with Joe in regards to call center alternatives to that, um, to our internal staff handling those calls. We were, we had asked what the cost, uh, contribution was that utility was making into that level of service of $700 period.
About $720 a year.
A year.
A year?
Yes. So what, what I would like to recommend is that, um, you know, the, the quality of service that we can provide internally as opposed to externally, um, I think is probably superior. But there's a cost to that. And I believe utilities was prepared to, to look at seven or $800 a month for that coverage. We're paying $720 a year, um, for that service from the utility, which is light. And if we can, um, back charge utilities or charge utilities for that service for the amount of $800 a month. Now that $720 turns into $9,600 that can go into that labor cost. And it doesn't impact, uh, the rate payer. It doesn't impact, um, the taxpayer. And I think that would be an appropriate way to, to help contribute to the cost of service.
Sure. And I think that's a great idea that you brought up and we can move forward on that and I could work with Mark Frye and Joe and Lori on that as well.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we'll want to evaluate it and come back with a cost based number and more than likely discuss it at budget time.
Yeah, if we, since there, there hasn't been a baseline of what, the amount of calls that come in over the next year. If that's being tracked, that becomes a baseline. And if they, $800 a month, uh, charged to utilities for maintaining that level of service becomes that baseline and those spike. Now we have an opportunity to charge accordingly for that service.
Alderman Shell Pepper?
Thanks Chief. Appreciate you being proactive in general on this topic, you know, post dispatch discussion. You've been doing well at moving forward and, um, I appreciate you coming to us now in a proactive manner to discuss the concerns you have up front. I'm kind of like a visual learner, so it's kind of hard for me to wrap my head around what we're trying to nail down here in terms of like where we're having the gaps. So, so the recommendation from the study, and I know, um, Alderman Mulder just kind of went over this, was four full time police clerks and 1,560 hours of part time police clerk activity. I know at that time you had told me you had concerns with that number. So I, you know, I, I don't believe this is like necessarily a surprise. But I'm trying to understand where the gaps exist, um, by, you know, using those part time numbers, um, hours and four full time police clerks. You know, where, where is?
Sure, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I, it's hard for me to.
And I know I, I gave a, a couple of spreadsheets and I know they were tiny.
Yeah, it was very hard. I couldn't make sense of it.
So I do apologize for that, uh, and so forth. But if you look at the two different scenarios there where it has four and five. When we have five dispatchers working, what basically happens is every pay period, we have, uh, a minimum of eight hours that'll need to be covered by part time employees. That's without using any off time, vacation time, sick time, any of that other stuff. So that just, even with five employees, the way a schedule works, there's gonna be a minimum of eight hours in a, in a pay period.
Okay.
If we transition that to a four person, um, I go up to, you know, some pay periods are 68 hours, some period, pay periods, there's 112 hours. And I can tell you that that may take six or seven part time people because part time people are part time people. And the way the hours fall, they may pick up an eight hour shift here, uh, and then there's another vacant eight hour shift later. The next person picks that up. But then you go to the next day and there's another eight hour shift open. And then the next day there's another eight hour shift open. They only want to work maybe two days out of the week, eight hours each. So all of a sudden I start having hours that nobody wants to pick up, you know, uh, because of that factor. So, so that's where it kind of comes in. I don't know if that explains it better.
No, that does actually make a lot of sense to me. And then I even kind of put in like some of the macro factors happening right, right now with the pandemic and just like how part time jobs are already. So, you know, I mean, every industry is hurting. So then to think we could be putting ourselves in that position is, you know, if we agree on the premise that 24/7 is the right call and that's kind of what we were working off of the study. That's what you've recommended in, in terms of that. So, so then the other question is, it's a net, you're saying it's net neutral in terms of new employees. Is that what you're saying? Or are we bringing on additional full timers and part timers?
The number is, uh, the number's five, okay, that we currently have in dispatch. Clerical is five. The two other positions on here already exist. So we're adding zero positions.
So then looking forward, I know, um, because we adopted the, the recommendations of the survey of the findings. How does that look going forward for our, our budget then in terms of, I mean, is this gonna be an extra expense that we weren't necessarily tabulating as part of this, you know, overall adoption of the study? I guess that's what I'm, I'm trying to, you know, figure out. Is, is this, is this a higher spend then overall? Were we not anticipating this?
It's, it's hard to say. There, there's a lot of factors that are gonna come into that.
Yeah.
You know, um, they calculate four and part time, um, you know, we're at five. It's gonna depend on, do all my full timers take full benefits? You know, do they not take full benefits? How about our part timers, you know? I mean, the hours are there, you know, I mean, we're good, we have to pay somebody, you know? It's just a point of, so I, I don't necessarily think there's gonna be any issues there. Yeah, I, I get what you're coming at. But it's hard for me to say. I didn't get that detailed with Matrix about how they broke down every position, you know, and how they went through all of that. But we had general discussions with them on this. And after talking to them, they agreed, um, you know, like I said, that their position was a little light, uh, in there. And they could see a five, a fifth full timer. So.
Okay. Alderman Douglas?
Chief, I have quite a few questions for you.
Okay.
One, currently your, the way you do your reports, do you dictate or do you have the officers type them?
Currently the officers are typing, but we are exploring the dictation, uh, to get the officers on the road a lot more.
So if you go to dictating, it's imperative to have 24/7 coverage. So the clerk can essentially type the report to get to the DA, DA's office by 10:00 AM.
Correct.
For charging. So that's one thing. Two, how, what's the shift minimum of Town of Conwalk on third shift?
Uh, one.
One.
I believe.
So, uh, our current staffing is two for minimums?
Our current staffing is two? Correct.
So being in booking, you have two officers back there. There's sometimes you have more than one person back in booking with you, um, that's under arrest. So hypothetically, you know, we're talking about officer safety that came up, um, with the dispatch study. You know, being on the same frequency of fire, it's an officer safety issue. It's a public safety issue. So now Summit has two on night shift and the Town of Conwalk has one. So there's something else going on that they're responding to in the city because their two officers are busy in booking. You're essentially mutuating the county that could be as close as Della Field, um, hopefully.
Right.
So at that point, if you have two officers that need actual help back there, um, you know, you're potentially putting out a 20 minute, 15 minute response to get someone there. And then how do they gain, gain access to the building?
Correct.
So I'm in full support of 24/7. Uh, I think there's efficiencies that could be done with other things. But I think you do need to have 24/7 coverage. And coming from where I am, um, you know, we have six full time dispatchers. So it's 24 hour coverage. Um, they do a lot of our clerical stuff as well. So you're actually asking for one less than where I am. That's significantly smaller than here. We don't run any part time staff. So that's one difference, but I think the big thing, talking about everything in the past of body cams and it's public safety, it's officer safety. You know, the officer safety aspect's huge of having someone there that can let someone in. And one of the biggest things personally me that, you know, voted for dispatch to go over WCC, it wasn't a savings issue. It was a public safety, officer safety issue. That's why I'm in full support of giving you, you know, what you asked for.
Alderman Rozak?
Just one real final point. Um, I agree with what, what Chris said. I think when we did the dispatch changeover, one of the things at least I said during the comments and what I promised was to make sure that we continued the same level of service here in Conwalk. And, um, if the chief right now thinks that same level of service means we, you know, we do this versus what the study says. And I think the study might've been a little unclear because they already had two, like a part time and a half, two full time. So that, that number, the four and their part time numbers might be a little odd. And the only reason this is a debate, I think, is just when you, when you look at the numbers in general, which is why the questions, especially, uh, Mulder brought this up too. If 24/7 coverage is, is 8,760 hours a year, five full time people at 1,800 hours, if they're working 40 hours a week is 9,000. You add in the part timers, that's 3,600. So that's 12,600 hours of staffing. But that doesn't factor in the vacation, the time off, that they, they came in, but then they got sick and they have to leave and now you got someone else that's gotta get called in. So I, I don't think it's, it's outlandish at this point. Um, and we said we were gonna keep the same level of service. So I think we have to, we have to stick with that. So, thanks.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Alderman Kowieski?
I'd like to make a motion to approve as presented.
Second, Zappel.
Any further discussion? Call roll please.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Excuse me. Alderman Shell Pepper?
Aye.
Alderman Kowieski?
Aye.
Alderman Douglas?
Aye.
Alderman Rozak?
Aye.
Alderman Zappel?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
And to utilities, consider act on resolution 22 dash R3004, awarding contract for a 20 year electric distribution plan, including a five year construction work plan. Lucas?
Thank you. Uh, so I'm here tonight looking for approval for our engineering consultant for the electric system study. The electric utility solicited an RFP for a 20 year electric distribution stand, uh, distribution plan, including a five year construction work plan. We sent it to six different firms that received it. We got three responses. This study will help us guide us into the future for the next 20 years, in essence, to help, uh, master plan our electric system. We followed the city's procurement policy, uh, for the qualified base selection and graded all three of the applicants that we received. EPS engineering design was the number one with a number of 67,800 and we're requesting a 10% contingency for anything that may come up during the study. For 6,780 dollars for a total of 74,580. This is under the estimated budget that we had of 105,000. So looking for a motion to approve that.
Do we have any, any questions or comments? Like to entertain a motion, please?
So moved, Zappel. Second, Ellis.
Any further discussion? Call roll please.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shell Pepper?
You stepped away.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that. Um, Alderman Kowieski?
Aye.
Alderman Douglas?
Aye.
Alderman Rozak?
Aye.
Alderman Zappel?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Onto our next item, consider act on resolution 22 dash R3005, awarding contract for design modifications and construction administrative services for well number eight pumping station. Scott?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, tonight we have the memo and the resolution in front of you to have the same engineering firm do the design and construction administration for our well eight pump station. Uh, we are currently in the middle of drilling the monitored wells and test well. Uh, we also have a, uh, firm under contract to do the design of the pump station. And we've learned due to the complexity of this utility project, large scale, lots of complex, uh, specialized coordination between design and construction administration, we are asking, uh, to use the same, uh, firms to do both of those. This is no financial impact. We budgeted, uh, for this. So I, I, we're looking for a recommendation to, uh, approve resolution R3,005.
I'd like to entertain a motion.
Rozak.
Second, Ellis.
Any further discussion? Call roll please.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shell Pepper? Alderman Kowieski?
Aye.
Alderman Douglas?
Aye.
Alderman Rozak?
Aye.
Alderman Zappel?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Onto plan commission items, consider act on extraterritorial preliminary plot for the Snyder Farm subdivision located at West 359 North 6280 Brown Street in the town of Conwalk. Mr. Gallo?
The application for this preliminary plot came before the plan commission. They recommended approval. It's for 77 lots on the southeast corner of Highway P in Snyder Lane. Lots will be about three quarters of an acre in size each. They are not taking any city water or city sewer. It's all served by the city, but it does fall within our plating area. So we have the rights to review it. Recommend approval of the plat.
Any questions for Mr. Gallo? Mr. Rozak?
I guess I've never asked this question for years. What if we didn't approve it? What, what would happen if we just decided not to approve the extraterritorial zoning in the town?
There's certain reasons why you could.
If you don't take any action, it will be deemed approved.
What if we deny it though? What if we voted down?
You have to have a very good reason to not, to deny it or you'll be sued and you will lose.
What would we be sued for?
Uh, because you're taking, um, action on the basis of your extraterritorial, uh, land division, uh, authority without any reason.
Well, what if we just, what if we think there's too much, I don't know, building going on on that side of town? Okay. So what would be a reason that we could deny an extraterritorial zoning? I mean, why, why even have the approval process if we can't deny it?
You can, if it is in your, um, comprehensive plan that lays out standards.
It's, this one's not. This is not included.
It's nowhere near you. So it's not gonna affect you.
I, no, I know it doesn't. Um, I've just been, I know that the state's trying, I know there's some efforts to change the law on the extraterritorial zoning because it doesn't make any sense, but.
Well, this is land division, not zoning.
This is extraterritorial plating. This is strictly the review of the land divisions. Someday this land could potentially be in the, the city. Doesn't seem likely, but the whole town could collapse and, and it could be could become city. So if, if there's certain things, if they're creating lots that are circular in shape or, or unbuildable and they are all wetlands. And we, we just said this is not really good planning. We could deny it for those reasons.
Your recommendation in an instance like this is this looks fine.
It looks fine, although lots are rectangular.
Or a safety issue, something like that, that create a safety issue for the city, something like that.
Reed, um, Madison versus Boucher.
I'll do that on my way home tonight.
Liked, Alderman Kowieski?
You know, I, I get there's some, uh, lighthearted humor associated with the question as it appears. But I think it's a valid question. If, if, if there's not a purpose for an approval, why have the approval? So, good question, good answers. I'm, I'm all in favor of it, but it, that.
Yeah. Thanks Dan.
Nothing wrong with it.
You're welcome.
Like to entertain a motion, please?
Don't move, Ellis. Second, Zappel.
Any further discussion? Call roll please.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shell Pepper?
Aye.
Alderman Kowieski?
Aye.
Alderman Douglas?
Aye.
Alderman Rozak?
Aye.
Alderman Zappel?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Um, onto our next item, consider act on ordinance 21 dash 012, 01024, creating a planned development overlay district, PD 421 for Olympia Fields Commercial Development, including lands at 1520 Unity Drive, 1408, 1414 Summit Avenue and 135 through 1375, uh, Royal Mile Road. Please recognize that this is an ordinance change and request, and it's your first reading. And you have the option to keep it that way or waive that if a motion is made. Uh, Mr. Gallo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Right, we have an ordinance that's on the agenda. The staff prepared a draft. The plan commission had some concerns. Uh, those changes have been incorporated into the ordinance. Also, updated plans were submitted based on plan commission's request to provide certain exhibits, um, of what changes and where. Like, for example, there was six exemptions being requested. One of them was building height. The plan commission asked where is the building height? Is it all 20 buildings or is it just one building or two? Well, they said it was three buildings and they colored those purple. So those plans were, uh, updated, uh, since the plan commission meeting. Packets were, were sent out to you and the ordinance was updated referencing these updated plans. So, um, if any changes are made, I can certainly incorporate those, but I just want you to know what you'd be acting on is the plans that you received in your, your packet, as well as the recommendation of the. as well as the recommendation of the, of the plan commission. Now, we held a, a public hearing earlier this evening on this, this creation of the planned development overlay. The only people that spoke were, were the, the applicants and other people in favor of, of these changes. No one spoke against this. There is, again, it consists of forty-six acres in size. It's all mostly non-residential areas. One of the exemptions is, is to create two buildings to allow some mixed use, which is a new trend in these areas, to allow retail on the ground floor and residential above. You know, with a development of this size of forty-six point three acres, typically, a developer does need some exemptions. You know, there's a lot of parcels within the site, and a lot of, we'd like to encourage cross-access easements. So this is not unusual. You know, Pap's Farms has a PD overlay over the whole thing, so this, this is fairly typical. I think the biggest concern that we had of is, is probably the one exemption about building height. Out there, it's a fifty-foot maximum, and they're asking to go up to, to sixty-five feet. Now, I did some studies. I, I have the Town Place Suites with their building height. I have the Fowler Lake Village example, and the Hackney House Apartments with their heights. And, you know, like Fowler Lake Village really depends where you're measuring, you know? They, they go up to sixty-two feet, eight inches, so sixty-two. But the top of the pergola would be sixty-nine, and then there's an elevator shaft that comes up, and that's almost seventy-eight feet tall. So it really depends where, where you're measuring, but the, the top of the main building is, is like sixty-two feet. The Hackney House Apartments is, the, I took the biggest one, the third, three-story one. It measured out at thirty-nine feet, but it was built up on a hill. The ones closest to the road, the site drains to the north, so, you know, there's probably five to seven feet of grade there. So it's, it's probably closer to around forty feet. Town Place Suites Hotel, again, it's kind of got an unusual roof line. The main roof is like about forty-five feet, but then there's these projections of another seven feet going up, so about fifty-two feet. So if you really want to know what fifty feet looks like, it's probably the, the latest Town Place Suites Hotel by Marriott there. It's fifty feet. The other exemptions they're asking for this evening, the setbacks, the, the parking reductions. I, I, as, as a city zoning administrator, I can get behind all those. I'm comfortable with, with all of those. The plan commission will be reviewing each site individually as a building gets constructed. We'll look at the use, and we'll look at the exact parking counts at that time. So I'm here to answer any questions, and I know the applicants are here as well, about this PD overlay.
Alderman Kavieski.
I have several questions, most of which will be for Mr. Maroni. I appreciate the fact that Mr. Maroni spent time with Alderman individually and in groups of two to review and provide some in-depth information before tonight's meeting. During that, we had some discussion about a couple of things that I, I wanted to bring up. And there's, there was, obviously, with public knowledge, there were some public comments that were shared, both directly and indirectly through social media in regards to some concern. And, and this is, I think, an appropriate venue to, to address those. So the, the public knows that they're being heard, and what the, what the answer is. And then whatever that opinion is to the answer is what it is. So there were some, I've heard concerns about bait and switch, and a, a desire to maintain that small-town feel that Oconomock is really known for, as it applies to the additional height. And I, I think you covered some of that initially. Initially, the, the main location off the roundabout wasn't yours.
Correct.
There was nothing that you presented to the community nor the council that you're coming back to change. This is part of a revised plan that incorporates that property and the utilization of that property to maximize the development and the benefit of the community. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, no, I think that's fair. I, you know, we didn't, we didn't want to make a presumption at all through this whole project that we would get and attain the city parcel. So we didn't plan for it. You know, that's why in all the exhibits, it's always been vacant land, because we don't want to be presumptuous. We're happy we got it, because we think it fits into the vision that we heard early on from the city council, is they wanted something that was live, vibrant. You know, we heard Drexel Town Square was a, an example that people said, you know, that's something, you know, early on when we were doing the project. Well, there really wasn't a, a, a parcel to really create that type of feel, because that really needs to be kind of in your focal area, in your entrance area. So, so, so no bait and switch, because it was never on our plans. This is, this is just something, you know, new that's coming before you.
The other thing that I, I heard was, man, if the council allows that additional height here, they're going to, they're going to be requested to provide additional height everywhere, and it's a slippery slope. And I think the request for the additional height where you've requested it has specific purpose.
Yeah, it's, it's a specific purpose, once again, trying to create that energy, kind of that vibrancy, kind of that feel. I think the other thing I would say is, you know, the, you know, we would not go very high on the outlots. You know, people need to have a view corridor back to the businesses, like to the, you know, the Sundex store, you know? So we're very strategic about where we're asking for these, the height requests.
And there's scale associated with that, as you mentioned. So you're, you're starting off relatively low along Summit. You're potentially stepping up to sixty-five feet along that main artery toward the pond. And the scale associated with that to the hill is, the hill's about a hundred and thirty-five feet-ish.
Ish, I think it's one, yeah, whatever, yeah. Is it more?
One-sixty, so it's, it's significantly higher. It's not going to be a blocking of that, that hill. And that hill is really, I think, a critical element of the next phase of development as it's moving west. That's really where the excitement comes in.
Right, and these are conceptual plans. I think it's important to, for people to realize too, we've, we've got to, you know, go ahead and do the planning, you know? But it's nice to know kind of what the rules of the game are, so we know what, what level of creativity we can have to create, you know, kind of a first-class development.
Couple other things. I'll, I'll share the floor as we kind of do the loop, so.
Okay. Any other comments?
Alderman Rosick.
Hey, Matt, thanks for coming.
You're welcome.
I, I'm okay with, like Jason is, with the, the, some of the height issues, the side yard internal setbacks. The one I had a question about, maybe because I can't conceptualize it, is this terrace setback? I mean, does that mean you're going to put those buildings on sixty-seven right on that walking path, basically?
No, we, won't be the building. So, you know, you've got the terrace area, which, which is kind of a green space area that will buffer, you know, the, the lots and anything on inside to the bike path. So we want the flexibility, we're not saying all the buildings would, would do that, but have the flexibility to kind of create, kind of, you know, let's just say it's an ice cream store, right? That wants to locate in that area. It'd be good to have, you know, an easier-to-get-to pathway and a little outdoor seating area off the bike trail. You know, there's probably some concerns about safety and all that. We, so we'd have to work through the design process as well to make sure, you know, it's not just one through thoroughfare, you know, to do that.
So, so just walk me through, along the bike path there, which is really cool. It's a good connectivity to the other, like, Country Trail and everything in the whole area. Somebody could potentially put a building with like an ice cream stand, according to this, right on the path, like, right next to the path.
Well, the building setback requirements, I want to say, is ten feet that we're requesting in that area? And then we're having a, you know.
I thought it was zero, and I could be wrong.
No, that's the, that's the terrace area, that is zero. The building, there's still a building setback that would be ten, ten feet off.
So what is their terrace? What does that mean? I guess I'm just, maybe I'm struggling with that terminology.
Patio. Patio.
Patio, okay. Yeah. Could go right on top of, right next to the bike path, so it should be directly connected to it.
Alderman Mulder.
Were you done, Matt?
No, I, I did have another question too.
Go ahead.
But that's okay. I'm okay with the, the heights requested here. The, the two pink, the three pink buildings in exhibit, whatever this is, six here, in our packet. I think it looks odd to have height on those three buildings up to sixty-five and not have that other building at the equal height. If that's going to be a medical office building and you're going to have all that height, I think that should at least be sixty-five as well. And, and maybe we should talk about whether sixty-five is appropriate or something closer to seventy for what Fowler Lake Village is, so they can do a terrace or patio or whatever, so.
Alderman Mulder.
So that actually was my question. Sixty-five feet, is that the top of whatever's up there? If there's a pergola up there, or is that the, the roof line and anything on top of that is then built above? So, nothing taller than sixty-five feet?
Nothing taller than sixty-five.
Because that, yeah. And that, we talked about this, is that, so that you anticipate that being four levels of apartments?
Yeah, one story of retail generally. There might be an exception that goes up to a second floor, but then, then, then four stories of apartments.
What does it do to the economics if that's, if it's more than fifty but less than sixty-five and you get three layers of apartments? Is that not what you want? Is it making an untenable project?
It, it'll make it, it'll, it'll, it'll move it into the questionable line, I think. We haven't run the full numbers on it, but with, you know, with a project like this, right? You need to, you know, make sure you have space that's affordable for people to rent, not only on the retail but on the apartment side. And so if you should restrict it, you're driving up your rents and, you know? And I think it's good for the city too, it's more increment.
Right.
Alderman Ellis?
You told us we don't have to worry about that, you pretty much.
Well, we, we're always going to worry about it, right?
Twelve-year payback, right?
I'm up at night, so worrying, am I going to meet my increment requirements? So, because Stu's got to pay the guarantee, it's not me, and I'll be in trouble.
We had a lot of questions for you, so I'll try to get to everybody in the, when I see them. Alderman Ellis is first.
Okay, a side yard of zero setback and a terrace of zero setback. I have concern on that for safety purposes. You have the bike trail right there. Somebody veers off, somebody is trying to miss a branch, whatever the case may be, can land in another person's property, we got all the, we got other issues there. Is it really that necessary for you to have that?
That's a great question, Alderman. It's not, I'll, I'll be honest with you. I think it would make a more attractive development, I think it'll invite more people into it. But if that's something you guys aren't comfortable with, that is not a game changer for us, so. We, the, having the flexibility to have that as a design element, we would like, but it's not necessary.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Yeah, I've, I've been a supporter of this project for the most part, but, but with caveats. I'm not a blank check, check supporter. So I, I support when I'm provided with the evidence to make me decide I should support it because it's in the best interest of our community and the people who live here. I think, you know, the beginning of this, when, when the city was looking at forced-taking of land, I wasn't in favor of that until I was provided with physical evidence that showed we had exhausted all possible revenue, you know, avenues to, to get to that point. That was shown. We made the decision, we came together as a council and unanimously, unanimously voted in favor of it. So that's where I kind of go to this, this piece here on the height. How come you can't give us some renderings or some drawings? Or something that just shows us what we're working with here before I sign off on it on behalf of the people in this community?
It's, it's a, it's a legitimate, great question, right? And so this, this, the, the story here is things have gotten accelerated with our anchor tenant. You know, and so originally, we probably, we needed a whole bunch of other variances as well that was pushing this, and forcing us to kind of design the whole project very quickly. And, and they want some certainty too, and other tenants do as well of what's occurring. So everything is going, which is good, a lot faster than what we had anticipated going, because we really weren't planning on getting in, really in the designing phase until probably this spring, this summer. But we're having a lot of questions, and people want to know what's going to happen here. And so in order to provide that kind of certainty, we've had a rush, you know, to kind of plan this out. And with that, I think the other positive element is the anchor tenant Sundex is using the architect that we recommend for our entire development. And so they're busy trying to get that up and running at the same time. So it really is, you know, kind of about man-hours, why I can't get you a rendering, hey, this is what it's going to look like. You know, I probably can in two months, but in the short term, I can't. But I've got other parties interested in investing in this area that want to know generally what's the game plan.
Well, I want certainty too, though, too. And sort of the people that, you know, that live here and that I represent, they want to know what they're getting as well. And so that's why I'm like, well, how about we sign off on, you know, all these other exemptions you want, minus the height requirement, until you come back and bring us some, some drawings, some renderings, so we can actually get an idea of what we're working with. Can you do that?
We would like to have the flexibility to know what's going to happen. And, and Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, architecturally and all that kind of stuff? I don't know if it comes back to the council.
No, nothing's coming back here after we sign off on this. And I'm not looking at, just from an architecture standpoint, I'm looking at it from, I mean, what is it going to look like with the hill and the backdrop? What is it going to look like in general? It's a big decision for the community. The, there's no other buildings like that, you know, out there in, in that area. So it does, and, you know, we're talking about precedent, and I liked Alderman Kavieski bringing up a lot of those points. They seem to come from my Facebook page mostly, that people were making. So, because I'm asking for, for feedback from, from the community and asking what people have concerns about. And so those are some of the things that we saw. And so I, I, I think it is a big decision, and, you know, and it kind of fits into this broader discussion of where do we see heights being like, you know, out in this Summit Avenue corridor going forward? And I know we don't legally obligate ourselves to have, you know, future sixty-five-foot buildings wherever they want. I, I understand that, but it certainly sets a precedent for council consideration that, hey, we've signed off on this once before, and we're going to, you know, we might do it again going forward. And so I just want to make sure we have all the information upfront, that we're fully aware and transparent, you know, as to what's happening. And it's like, what you're saying is like, well, I want the transparency for my, you know, for my, for my buyers or potential tenants. And I'm like, well, I want the transparency for, for my community and, and the people I represent. So that's what I'm trying to, how do we come together on that?
Yeah, and I, and I think in all fairness, you know, the direction that we were provided very early on was, don't piecemeal this, come in with a master plan, don't, don't piecemeal it. So we heard that very loud and clear the very first time we started this project, that that was not going to work, right? So I need, I need certain variances to make certain things happen. And I, I'm just taking the advice from the pre, what I got direction from the previous council. And then in those discussions as well, we heard very loud and clear, we want something vibrant. We want something similar to Drexel Town Square. Well, that's what we're trying to deliver, you know, by creating some, some height variance. So that's why we're here, you know, to have this debate, to have this discussion. Is it appropriate, is it not? We think it is, you know, appropriate. We, we think it sits with the vision we heard early on from the council when we started this project. And so that's what we're planning on trying to follow through on.
Alderman Kavieski.
Are you done?
You go ahead, and we can wrap back around.
Okay, um, thank you. A couple of things, the, 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 the safety associated with the zero setback to the, to, I'll call the patio area. I, I think that element is, is going to be important to create that vibrancy. And I do understand the safety concerns associated with that. And we had talked about maybe incorporating ballards along there. I think if we can structure this approval with the safety element incorporation to allow for that zero setback, however that would need to be done, that would provide the public safety element associated with the vibrancy associated with that visually as you're going down Summit Avenue. So I, if we can do that, and if we can make that happen, if you so choose to allow for that, I think that'd be beneficial. In regards to the height and, and the concern associated with, with that in general, we saw that play out in the downtown here. It started out with the Worthington, and it created a, a move to create a, an overlay for the downtown that had vision corners and step backs and things of that nature. Perhaps that variance from fifty to sixty-five, seventy feet incorporates step backs. If that could be incorporated into the approval, that provides for the height and maybe a little bit extra height to accommodate for the value proposition associated with that. That interest architecturally plays to everybody's best interest and doesn't set a precedence that sixty-five feet of.
Straight.
Straight, narrow, is acceptable, nor in the community's desire for how it's represented moving forward.
Yeah, we heard that loud and clear from the Plan Commission and from many, many of you, so we understand that.
So, you know, if there were step backs, I'd actually be okay with seventy feet because that allows for the square footage to be developed without creating the alleyway effect. And I agree with Alderman Rosak that if you do it on the, if we do approve on the two buildings off the roundabout and on the one close to the pond, it would make sense to give the ability to do that in that, in that center building just so you don't have some kind of a wonky-looking visual. I think in the discussion, we covered the, the points of concern associated with scale. And scale, I think, is appropriate discussion in regards to that, that main road that would go back to the hotel. And I think if we go to some step backs with that, with the hotel, that provides some unique opportunity for that hotel on those upper floors. With additional height, that could have some really nice benefit to those who are coming into our community as an event-driven destination with the amenities that hopefully play out in that Phase Two. And for everything that the downtown currently brings. So I don't know how you would want to structure the motion tonight to incorporate those because you do want to see something approved. And I would support, you know, waiving that first reading if we get it right tonight. If the council feels we're right tonight, we might as well just make that happen. So there's a couple of other things, but we'll.
Yeah, I need Alderman Zappel?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Matt, again, for coming to present to us tonight. And excited about the anchor tenant of Sundex. Getting a lot of excitement from my neighbors. My wife texts me, she's like, hey, ran into, you know, Selena, she's excited, ran into so-and-so walking the dog. And very excited about that, but thank you again. I'm going to echo Alderman Rosak's comments from earlier. I think for the medical building, you might want to look at the height there. Oconomowoc's an evolving community and opportunities to attract more complementary businesses support are amazing downtown here in the Lake Country area. You know, we just need to remain flexible, I think, from the council level. At this point, I haven't heard anything from my neighbors, constituents talking to them when I've been out and about to not be supportive of what's presented here tonight, so thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Well, I, I think, you know, all those things could be true, Alderman Zappel. But I, I just don't think we've gotten that much feedback on the height in general yet. I don't think there's been that much opportunity for the community weigh in yet on this. I think it's been a few weeks. I definitely wouldn't support waiving the first or the second reading. I think we should bring it back again to let the community continue to know what's going to happen here. And I guess I'm just not going to support any height exemption without having renderings and drawings. So I'm happy to vote in favor of all the other exemptions tonight, but I, I'm not signing off on, on the height without knowing what I'm signing up for. So that's where I'm coming at it. And it's not, it's not saying it's not happening. It's just asking for the information to make sure we're doing our due diligence on the front end for the people we're, you know, supposed to be looking out for. So that's, that's where I'm coming down on it.
Alderman Ellis?
I concur with Alderman Shellpepper. I think that because fifteen feet is, is pretty substantial, I really would like to have a visual just to, so that I can understand what your concept is. I still think that the setback of zero is very concerning. And you already said it's not a deal changer. And I'm, I, I think that for safety purposes, that we, we need to just take that out.
Alderman Douglas?
Policy decision.
Yep.
All right, so it sounds like the biggest thing here is the height. It's one of the biggest things that people are talking about. People are talking about fifty, you're requesting sixty-five, seventy was brought up. What height do you actually need? I'll be blunt. What height do you actually want?
Sixty-five.
Your original renderings and stuff, you don't need anything more than that? What makes you go to sixty-five rather than eighty?
Eighty would be, eighty, eighty, well, eighty would not, I mean, that would push the, that would not work with visual corridors, what we want to try to accomplish. That's, that's too much.
But at sixty-five, you said the project was questionable, whether it's going to be profitable and everything.
So it's, we're, once again, how do I put this? We've been asked all along to come in and don't piecemeal the plan, right? So that's what we're trying to do. We're at this point in time and we're saying, here's a concept, here's what we want to do. We've not run the numbers on it yet. We've not, you know, had the chance to do any, any of that kind of detailed type of study that we do to do the project. So that can be done, but that's, we're piecemealing the project. And if that's a change of direction by the council, it's a change of direction by the council, we understand. But that was not the understanding that we've had from the very beginning of this project because I think it was Alderman Rosak that basically said, I don't want to have you guys piecemeal this project, you know, coming back. I don't know, or was it, it was Alderman, I can't remember which one. You guys, I think we're both on the same page.
Just want you to meet your increment.
And I do, too.
Exceed, exceed.
So, so that's, that's why we're here, is because we don't want to piecemeal it, you know? And it's a policy decision for you guys. We, you know, we would hope we've built up enough trust to show that we deliver on what we say and do a great job, you know? And, you know, if, if you want to make a different policy decision, that's, that's why you guys get paid the big bucks.
Alderman Kavieski?
So, so going back to twenty nineteen, early twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, yeah.
It was, there was discussion about the resort and doing something with the resort and then doing something over here and doing something over there and trying to piece something together. And at that time, it was voiced and I think concurred it by the council at the time that that was not in the best interest of the community nor the development and that a master plan comprehensively needed to be developed in order to move forward, which led us down the road to support the public infrastructure in a master plan approach, which I believe is going to work out in the best interest of the community and the development. And creating a destination-oriented development along the Summit Avenue corridor. Those are all very important, I think, not only to the community, but to whatever developer heard that, with you, to deliver. The, the height request, to me, makes sense. One of the things that we've, that I've heard, being on council, and Matt, you've heard it a little bit longer than me, because you've been on council longer than me in regards to Pabst Farms development, is nobody knows where retail's going. Nobody knows what anything is going to happen, so we're just going to.
That's a true piecemeal.
Right, so having the concept of that Drexel Square, that integrated retail residential component seems to be kind of a hard-line trend, and that's not going anywhere. And that's why you're, you're coming in for the height request. You have potential tenants that are interested in more than single-story, potentially two-story, which then drive up the height to that mixed-use approach. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, I think it's fair to say.
So, again, I would support the sixty-five feet. That's all you need. But I'd like to see a step-back element associated with that. I think that, that plays to the architectural planning and development in the downtown district from what we learned from that project that I mentioned initially. So there is some consistency from our downtown district to the Olympia Fields area to Pabst Farms. That makes sense to me. And again, I understand Alderman Ellis's concern associated with the safety element there, but I think if we can incorporate the ballards with the safety element, so you don't have a bike or a potential car or whatever that may be in a, in a bad scenario that has complete access to whatever pedestrians or patron, patrons are enjoying the ice cream on the patio, that makes sense to me.
Are you referring to a fence?
No.
Help me understand.
So a ballard would be.
Like what you had in front of the police station?
Yeah, like in front of the police station. Those are ballards.
Okay.
Concrete structures.
So they can be decorative elements, but there are safety elements as well. So it, it prohibits that vehicle or whatever from taking out an entire row of patio seating along that bike path.
I just don't see the natural.
The natural beauty to that?
The beauty, yeah. I just don't see it.
So I would suggest, you could tell me if I'm completely wrong, that would have to come to Architectural Committee.
Correct.
There is a craftsman-style element associated with that. They're not going to approve a blaze-orange ballard along there. It's going to have to blend into the architectural design.
Thank you. There's, there's two issues. I'm going to try to just speed up this a little bit, talk about building height and then the patio area, okay? Building height, I think what they're asking for is on the, the two main buildings there, they're looking for retail on the ground floor and then four stories. If the retail is fifteen feet and then each floor above that, the four is twelve, that's forty-eight, so that puts them at sixty-three feet.
Will that be apartments?
Yeah, the four, four would be apartments.
Okay, okay.
So they would like, that gets you to sixty-three. Then on top of that, they would like to have some type of a rooftop feature, like a clubhouse or something up on top, a rooftop element. That would get you, you know, up, that's why they're, they're talking. They're already at sixty-three. They're asking for that, you know, Mr. Maroney said sixty-five would work. But if you want to give them some rooftop excitement, they could go up to maybe seventy-five or something. Now, the step backs, what our downtown has is it allows these buildings pretty tall, but it says you go up thirty feet, then you got to go in ten. And then you got to go up, if you, you can go up another, once you hit fifty, you got to go in another five. So we could mirror something like that to, to allow not that, that straight-up wall, that sheer edge going straight up. So the downtown, we've already, the precedent's been set downtown where you have a ten-foot step back at thirty feet and then another five foot at fifty feet.
Jason, where were you thirty minutes ago?
That's.
Where, where were you thirty minutes ago? All you had to say was that there was going to be retail on the bottom and the next whatever was going to be apartments.
Right.
Guess what? We would have gone on from there.
Yeah.
So I think we, I don't know. I can move on now. I'm good.
That, that one building that they're not asking for the height on, we can't require them to go a certain height, but maybe you could say a minimum. I, what did I write down? Middle building should, should be, you know, up to sixty-five feet, but it's hard, maybe a minimum height require like maybe forty feet or something. That's what we did in the downtown area. And then the, I know there's concerns about the, the patio areas being a zero setback. You know, remember, our downtown is zero setbacks all over the place. So it's, I'm not concerned from a zoning. I think that would give it some vibrancy right off the path. I don't think, there's no buildings zero setback. It's, it's the parking lot, maybe a trellis would be there, outdoor picnic tables with, with umbrellas, that type of thing.
One thing I'd like to just add to council, when this came to Plan Commission, after it went through the Plan Commission, I had them go back to double-check the infrastructure because I didn't want to have us end up in the same situation with the wrong infrastructure that we have across the street. So they've given, staff has given me confidence because these two buildings are larger buildings, that what we're doing will not have a negative impact on infrastructure and development to the west because of a couple of different ways things are constructed. So we're in a good position there, so we don't end up in the same situation, for example, with sewer capacity and stuff like that. Come back to Alderman Mulder, who is next?
So Jason just contradicted a little bit what I'd asked before, was that sixty-five is the maximum? And that would be the top of the pergola or top of whatever you have out there. That's not what you just said. You said sixty-three feet would be the top of the building and then you could put restaurant space or event space on top of that, which visually there would be something above sixty-five feet.
So our request is sixty-five. So I, we put forward a request and I'm going to honor what our request is. So, so we would work with whatever we have up to sixty-five feet.
So this is a, and this is, I should know this, I suppose, after two years on council. We're, we're talking about putting a lot of things in here, like the step backs as part of the ordinance. Is, is that the only chance we have to, should that be written in here? Is that the right place to be putting that level of detail in? Or is that something that, so down to that last detail? Okay, all right, thank you.
Alderman Rosak?
Okay, so here's what I'm hearing. I, I had original concerns about the patios and the terrace area, just as a question. I didn't functionally understand it. We have zero setbacks in most of downtown Beer Garden. I mean, you go to really vibrant areas like San Antonio, they literally have the patios like right where people are walking. You know, right on the Riverwalk and that makes it vibrant. So if, I, I don't, I, I'm a, I'm a little afraid that like only two or three of these places will have a patio on the, on the, on the thing and it's going to look a little funky or wonky. But we got to put a little trust in them to do this right and make it look good, and I think they're going to want to. That bike path there could be really cool if there was a bunch of restaurants and stuff there with patios right by the bike trail. And you can pull off, park your bike and go in and get, so go in and get a beer or whatever. And of course, still making sure that you only have one, so you're driving safely, chief, on, on your bike. So I, I'm okay with that as long as, you know, architectural is going to look at that. As far as the building height, what I'm hearing is sixty-three is kind of like, like they're like pressed in. To me, we need to give them some, some room to make this work. They've got additional financial pressure on this project because of the DOT. So the DOT is forcing them to redo three of those roads. I don't understand why that happened. I, I wish more of that would have been cleared up, but that's just a fact. So we, we, what I think we should do is the two apartment buildings in the corner that are pink, I think we should give them up to seventy-five with step backs at the fifth, fourth and fifth level. I think it would be the fourth and fifth level.
Fifth level, right?
Fifth level and then the very top level can't, it would be a pergola or, or something like that. It can't be like another build-out essentially. So you get, you get a one level of commercial, four residential, and then, and that last residential's got to be step back. So it's got, because the, the number one hated building in town is Worthington. And Worthington is disliked because it's right on the thing and it's straight up and down and there's nothing there. So I think those two buildings should be there. I think the middle building should go up to sixty-five as a max, but it should have a minimum of fifty, because otherwise I think it'll look wonky. If you put a twenty, if you put it just a single level or two level there next to those two bigger ones, it's going to look goofy. And then, you know, the hotel, you asked for sixty-five. I mean, we could do seventy there. I, I mean, that's just, I'm just spitballing is, what I'm hearing is if you, if we want to make this financially viable, we need to do something with this, so.
Why don't we just make it sixty-five? That's what we want.
Yeah, this is so bizarre.
It just, you're, you're saying, well, I, I want, I want a hundred dollars, but you know what? I'm giving you two hundred.
Right.
Why don't we just give him sixty-five?
Well, they're, because they're right at it.
Well, then let's, let's give it to him and move on. He wants sixty-five. I already understand the setback. I'm good with that. Let's move on. I know.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Yeah, I, I just got to say, so we're talking about, you know, we wanted master planning, so we master planned. But, but just at the beginning of this conversation, you said this was never part of the original plan. So there's not really, this isn't a master plan discussion. This is a new request discussion that's happening right now.
No, it's part of a, it's called a plan development. So this is, this is part of the.
But you didn't own this parcel until just when?
And that's why we're putting together a plan.
Right, and so we, it, what's, what's, what's the question then? What's, 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 okay, so we're master planning. We're asking for a rendering of the height to understand what that's going to look like. Isn't that a master plan? How does that go against a master plan? Why do you keep looking over to Alderman Kavieski?
No, 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 I'm going to call Jason up. So, I mean, Jason's a planner, I mean.
Well, Jason, Jason, is it pretty typical for a community to come in, you know, three weeks ago, ask for a sixty-five-foot building and the community says, okay, sounds good. It's been a month? Or does it usually take a little bit longer? What's a typical timeline for something like this in a typical community?
Oh, a plan development could take six months to get approved.
Yeah, and what are, what are we, what's the timeline we're working on right now?
Third month, right now.
Okay, so we're doing pretty good. We're moving pretty fast.
Yeah. I mean, I, I understand where Alderman Shellpepper's coming from. If he can't visualize it, this is one of the flexibility requests is the, is the feel of this building. How's it going to look in that area? And if you, you want to request a rendering, you know, that wouldn't be typical if it conformed to all zoning, but it doesn't. So, you know, I think you're under the right.
So, you know, I think you're under the right, you know, to have your opinion and ask for a rendering. If the other council members can visualize it at sixty-five and feel that's appropriate, you know, I gave you examples of other buildings that were, you know, upwards in that height, then, you know, you vote how you feel. So I think it's, I can understand why you're asking for that, a rendering of how it would look in that location, because that is the flexibility they're asking for.
Alderman Ellis?
I, I.
I'm sorry, go back to Alderman.
He wasn't finished, go ahead.
I thought he was done.
Well, no, my question is, can we make an motion to amend and put it on the table and if, you know, if it gets voted down, it gets voted down?
Yeah, you can do all those different options. I wanna try to keep it in the open discussion first, so everybody has a chance to speak. Alderman Ellis?
So at the end of the day, this is only a first reading. So if we just go ahead and we allow it for the first reading and then bring it back, it gives us time to think through our questions instead of staying here until 1:00 AM in the morning. So I'm gonna request that we approve or recommend to accept this project as is, as first reading.
Are you making a motion?
I'm making an emotion.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to. Prove the recommendation. Is there a second?
I think we need to make some more, well, I guess I can't talk until there's a second.
Is there a motion to second? If there's no motion to second, then the motion fails. We'll go back to a discussion. Alderman Kavieski?
I'd like some clarity, Jason. Height is a big, height is a big thing. Would you agree? That's the biggest concern and that's valid. Absolutely. So there's some issue with how you kinda went through fifteen feet, twelve feet, got to sixty-three and what that provides for, at least from what I'm hearing. So if you get to sixty feet with building, you can go another five feet with a trellis in height, but that's not really high enough to do a trellis. It's not structural building that gets you to sixty-three or sixty-five. I think that's kinda where some of the question is. Where does a building itself stop? Or is the architectural element, like a trellis, at that sixty-five feet? Can you help kinda under?
Right, well, the code says fifty feet right now and architectural projections can go up another ten feet. That would be like an elevator shaft or something like that. So a trellis might fall under that, but if you guys set the height, you're already going above fifty. If you set the height at sixty-five, that would be it. Sixty-five would be it for anything to be, you know, part of the building attached, you know? And the example I ran the council through with the fifteen foot on the ground floor and then twelve foot, that's twelve foot stories. You know, if you wanted something a little bit more than that for taller ceiling height, we're restricting them down, because I got you right at sixty-three and you add even, you know, one foot, you're at sixty-seven for the four stories. So I just wanted the council to know that the twelve foot's just kind of a number out there.
So without objection, I'd like to take a ten-minute break. We'll come back at nine forty-five. Any objection? Let's take a ten-minute break. Let's kinda resort where we're at. I wanna make sure we make the right decision moving forward. Thank you.
No, no, no. I wanna just take more time to look at, you can explain it all you want.
I'm just trying to make sure that he comes back with the right thing. So if, if the building stops here, right, the actual structure, they wanna do a pergola, they can't do a pergola that's above sixty-five feet. If we say the building stops at sixty-five feet and you get up to ten feet more for architectural element and they wanna do a pergola, they can do a pergola. I think we need to understand that visually and provide direction.
I just don't understand why we can't get this. He says it can take two months to get that? Are you kidding me?
I think he's saying that because the architect that they're using is also the architect that the Sendex is using and they don't have the capacity to do this both at the same time and render. I think that's what I sort of. Oh, I know.
And so just make sure we're showing that breathing care and that we're asking tough questions. But then when you guys are like throwing out seventy-five, like trying to.
For me, I'm not, still for me, when I said seventy, it was to say the building itself stops at that sixty-five, but you can do a trellis up to seventy. So you can have that gathering space up on top of it for what? That's where my mind was in there, not that you can go, the building to seventy and something. That's why I think we need some clarity in regards to what the building is and what anything above that is. Or is the actual absolute top what we're saying? Because as he said with Fall Lake Village, the building height is.
Six-two or sixty-five.
But then there's the elevator shaft and everything else goes above that, so it's almost seventy, what do you say, seventy-nine feet is? Top of any element at Fall Lake Village? So I think that's what I wanna give them absolute clarity on, because if they come back with a rendering and the understanding that they leave with is anything can't be higher than sixty-five or the building needs to be sixty-five, you can do a trellis on top or whatever architectural. I want them to understand that, because I wanna understand that.
That's a good point.
Yeah, that's all. I'm not trying to jam anything through.
You're being a psychologist.
Short that out. I just wanna make sure they understand exactly what the limits are for what.
But, you know.
There's some things I, you know, I wish I had the opportunity to ask.
I don't know how I feel on it, because I just don't know what it looks like. I'm talking about.
Okay, well, thank you for the lively discussion. We're back in session. I wanna continue with any open comments from the Alderman for either Mr. Maroni or Mr. Gala. Do we have any further comments?
Okay, so, oh.
It doesn't matter, whoever wants to know.
No, go ahead, whoever.
Alderman Kavieski?
So just a point of order, because I saw Alderman Shellpepper, if he can go first, then I mean, then.
Oh, sure, I saw yours first, but yeah.
Well, Alderman. I'm not planning on engaging in discussion or comment. I was gonna make a motion, so if you anticipated to ask more questions or comment, then, yeah.
Oh, okay. So during break, we had some conversation, I wanna make sure that there was clarity in regards to the height. And we had conversation that there was specific height caps and then there were building heights that elements could go above. Is that, and I wanna make sure that we give Vanguard clear direction if it's sixty-five feet, nothing above sixty-five feet. Or if it's sixty-five feet, they could do a trellis or whatever, whatever that is. I wanna make sure that height is clearly identified for whatever caps and maximums there are.
Right, this is a plan development and not only do you wanna give, I want clear direction, because they're gonna ask me as soon as tomorrow rolls around, how high can we go, you know?
Right.
What is sixty-five? Can we put an elevator shaft above that? I wanna know where the council stands on this. So, you know, if you guys say sixty-five feet is the maximum height, that's the maximum height, you know, of anything attached to that building, you know?
Under your code, the definition of how you measure height is from the lowest level that is at the ground level to the highest point of a building. So if you say sixty-five feet, that's how it will be determined by your code.
So for clarification then, if we say sixty-five feet and there is an elevator shaft associated with that, they're probably gonna get less than sixty feet of actual building, because the elevator shaft is gonna potentially go above that. Is that correct?
Our code does have a height exemption area that talks about ten additional feet for apparatuses and things like that. So if the council said sixty-five would be to the top of the building with various accessory things going up ten additional feet, like stairways and elevator shafts, you know, that would give them the sixty-five feet of building plus that. So that's something you could take under consideration.
Alderman Rosak?
So here's what I think, based on that. That was a really good question. I don't know why we're actually struggling with this. I go to places all around the country, new developments like this. I was just in, I think it was Darby, Ohio, and it was in the middle of a residential area on the edge of the river. They tore everything down, just like this project, and they put like eight, nine-story hotels. And, I mean, it is one of the coolest spots. It's all new, restaurants, the whole nine yards. I mean, I think we should be trying to help the developer at this point, do a good job, make it look nice, but also maximize the TIF and get the TIF paid off, because we're in the hook and the hawk for eleven million dollars. So here's my proposal. These, the whole four buildings here, the three pink ones that are on the sheet and the one, we amend this slightly from their request. We give them sixty-five feet of height for all four buildings with an additional ten feet for any architectural elements above that. So a gazebo, a patio, they've got a little design element like the Marriott has, where it's got like a weird little triangle thing in the corner or whatever. That gives them the flexibility to do what they need to do and not be right at that. You know, we're at sixty-three and a half feet and we can't go any higher and if there's a little thing sticking out, we're screwed. I think that gives them the flexibility they need. I think it makes sense and I think it's sellable. The other thing we need to have at least one step back in the structure. So at the very top, buildable level, so the fourth level or the fifth level needs to be stepped back. At least, I think, at least five feet and, you know, that could be open for discussion. Then what we're looking at is a building that looks very similar to Fall Lake Village. Fall Lake Village is liked by the community. It brought in a high-end level of folks buying very expensive condominiums, retail on the first floor, step backs, even though at the very, very middle in the top, it's like seventy-five feet, it doesn't look like seventy-five feet. And that's a building I can sell to my constituents, it's my district, and I think they'll like it. And if we've got three or four of them lined up there and there's restaurants and there's parking and there's, you know, your new medical building right there and a nice hotel to take mom and dad to when they come in town, I think it's doable. And that's what I would propose. I'll make the motion once we have more discussion. I'll wait for the discussion.
Alderman Kavieski?
So I'd also, I'm on board with that. I would like to have the discussion about where we could get that rendering, based on going through Plan Commission. If you could help me with that.
The question was asked, can the council ask for those things? And the answer is yes. Can you require it as part of the PD? I believe you can. It's part of the flexibility that you can ask for.
Here's what, I propose that we only do the first reading. We do not waive the second reading. They come back by next week or the next meeting with some renderings that give us an idea of it, gives us a chance to talk to our constituents. I think we can sell it.
So just if you were looking at that, Mr. Maroni is that if we.
Here's a hypothetical.
No, that goes forward. Can you create renderings within our next council meeting?
No. To have the quality that you wanna have and to have it, make sure that it works in the marketplace. Because the moment I show that rendering, that's what it is, right? I have no confidence that in two weeks, I have a market study, I know exactly what we're doing, it's gonna work for everybody involved and have. plan would be, once we'd have it designed, we would actually seek all of your feedback, much like we have throughout this entire project, so, I don't have a problem, once we have done a market study and design it and come back in, but just kind of tell us generally what the rules of the game are, so that we, we can know what we're striving for, so, that's kind of what we're asking for, so, I'm comfortable coming back and having you guys approve those buildings, I'm comfortable, because, like I said, I don't want to jam anything down any community's throats, we're partners, and that's how, that's how we approach things, so, so, I just don't want to give you the wrong, because I think you're getting the wrong impression, I'm like, going, going, going.
No, 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 no.
And I just want to know what the rules of the game are, and then design the building, and then if you want to approve those, no problem.
And I, okay, so, two months, okay, is that, that's what I'm understanding, then, two months that you.
I don't know, I can't.
Okay.
So.
Well, that's what we said it as, my, so my motion would be to approve all the exemptions, except the building height requirements, the applicant would return in two months with a rendering of 65 feet as the baseline, with an additional 10 feet for, you know, auxiliary, or what, architectural, you know, structures on the top, that would allow up to a 75-foot maximum, so, how does that sound, Stan, does that make sense?
But the problem is, he doesn't know who the end user is.
So, I, I think that's a great motion, in a lot of ways, to be honest with you, and I think if you want to say, hey, before you start construction or get a permit, we want to see it and approve it, I don't have a problem with that.
Oh, so you don't even have to have a end time on it?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Before, before final approval of the height, they must produce plans that are acceptable.
To the council.
I think, I think we go with what I want to do, Chaz, which is 65 for all four, with the 10-foot accessory, with the step back, and then with, with the caveat that before the buildings are finalized, or whatever, that they come back to council for approval of the buildings, that gives us our chance to look at the renderings and say.
But, but at that point, we've already legally allowed that, we have said, then, that you are allowed to have the 65-foot minimum, end of story, and I'm not there yet, because I haven't seen what we're actually dealing with yet.
But if they come back, and we don't like to, if we, if we write it into the, into this motion, they have to come back, and if we don't like the look, or we think it's too tall, we just say, eh, do something different, you know, step that, step that back a little bit more, or whatever, I mean, I, I think that gives us the control we want.
Stan?
Well, the problem that you got is, if you do approve a PUD that allows for that height, then you get into a, an argument as to whether or not you're being reasonable in terms of the aesthetics down the line, if you don't want to approve the height, don't approve it, if you want to approve the height under this PUD, approve it, if you want, if you don't approve it, they can always come back and ask for an amendment to their PUD at that point in time when they build it, we're fighting over 10 feet, or 15 feet of height, why don't you folks decide what you want to do?
So, we have the start of a motion, and I want to make sure where we are, that we complete it, or withdraw, or rephrase it.
Yeah, I'm going to just stick with it, and we'll, we'll see what happens, I, no, I'm not going to rephrase it, because I understand what Alderman Rozek's saying, but I still think, then, we're basically signing off on the 65-foot, I don't, I'm not opposed to the 65-foot, I'm just trying to give our community as much time as possible to assess what we're going to be put in there, that's, that's all I'm trying to do.
I think that's very fair.
Yeah.
And I think everybody's trying to work together, the positive thing is, we have a developer that wants to work with us.
Yeah.
As much as we want to make sure we get what we've been asking for, so I think that's very, very fair, I, but I think we need to move this forward, we've been talking about it and going in circles.
Yeah.
And so I think you put the motion, would you restate it, I want to make sure that everybody, we hear it correctly, we have it set up properly, before somebody offers to make a motion, or a second.
Yep, so I'm going to move to approve all the exemptions, except the building height requirement contingent on the applicant returning in two months with a rendering, based on a 65-foot primary structure with architectural designs allowed to go another 10 feet.
You, you want to see the step backs in there?
Um.
Because he wants to see the rendering motion.
Yeah, I think I'm going to just.
Okay, stay with that. The motion on the floor, do I have a second? The motion then fails, do I have another motion?
I've been there, Chaz.
Yeah.
You guys are going to be, you're going to be getting it on the other end.
Before you make that motion, I'd like to see the safety elements incorporated into the zero setback along the patio, some safety elements.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to motion, I'm going to move to amend the one section regarding the height, you can do that, if you want to, I, I don't think we need it, I think we should trust a developer on that, I don't know, I don't think having a patio near a bicycle lane is a safety issue.
The bicycle lane's on 67.
Yeah, but the patios are on the other side, well, I mean, I just, I just think we need to give them some flexibility on that, and look, I mean, you know, I was, yeah, so, I, I don't care if you want to make that motion, but I want to do this one separately, so it's very clear, I'm going to move to approve, well, do you want to make the safety things, or not?
Please do them separately.
Let's, let me just amend.
We'll vote for one and not the other, so.
Let me move to amend this part of the request, okay, and then if anyone else wants to make an amendment, I think it makes the most sense.
I'm on board with that.
I want all four of those buildings to be 65 feet in height, with 10 feet of architectural elements at the top, with at least one step back of no less than five feet, with finding, final building approval to be done by council.
Second. One question, you want final building design, what the design and what it looks like by council, correct?
Yeah, like a general design, I mean.
General design, I just want to make sure, I know what you want.
General design approval by council, like, I don't want to look at each little brick in the windows, panes, right, just kind of a general conceptual design of the buildings.
So, we have a motion, did I hear a second?
Second, Ellis.
A second, was Ellis, any further discussion?
This is just to amend the plan, without voting on the whole plan.
Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Douglas?
Aye.
Alderman Rozek?
Aye.
Alderman Zappel?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
One, two, three, four, failed, I mean, the no's.
The amendment, the amendment did not pass.
The amendment failed, the no's, had four no's, three yeses.
Are there any further amendments to this proposal, to this ordinance change, I should say, and I would entertain a motion for the ordinance?
So moved.
Second, Ellis. Any, and we're maintaining it as a first reading, correct, for clarity?
Correct.
Correct, any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Yeah, Alderman Shellpepper?
Nay.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Douglas?
Aye.
Alderman Rozek?
Nay.
Alderman Zappel?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Nay.
Uh, one, two, three, four, failed, I mean, the no's.
The amendment, the amendment did not pass.
The amendment failed, the no's, had four no's, three yeses.
Are there any further amendments to this proposal, to this ordinance change, I should say, and I would entertain a motion for the ordinance?
So moved.
Second, Ellis. Any, and we're maintaining it as a first reading, correct, for clarity?
Correct.
Correct, any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Yeah, Alderman Shellpepper?
Nay.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Douglas?
Aye.
Alderman Rozek?
Aye.
Alderman Zappel?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Okay, motion, pass.
Thank you all, let's move on. A lot of good discussion, though, thank you. On a new business consider act on resolution 22-R3001, accepting the petition for direct annexation for the Robert Miller lands located on county trunk K. Mr. Gallo?
Thank you, it's been so long, I think the computer fell asleep. We have a petition, a resolution in your packet, for the direct annexation of land from the town of Oconomowoc into the city, there's two pieces, there are two separate pieces, with two separate tax key numbers, but all the land is vacant, they're located on the south corner here of Highway K and Highway P, it's under the same ownership, you can see right there, the size is, and I, it's about 40 acres, or a little more than that in size, the total area is actually 42.22 acres, I think this larger one is about 36, and this is about six acres roughly, for the master plan for this area, we did create the planning department, along with the applicants, a little neighborhood plan, this is a concept plan, it's not been approved by the council, you haven't seen it, but we've, we started being a little more aggressive, planning out this northeast area, the areas that we're talking about annexing tonight would be the future commercial, right on the corner of P and Z, it's the same depth of commercial as we have for Piggly Wiggly and the stuff north of that, and then a transitional area, and that other smaller piece, that's five or six acres, is right in this area, and that would be residential, so we have future land uses, I did contact all the other owners that are south of K to ask if they wanted to join in on this annexation, that'd be Mr. Rosenau, and, and the other gentleman here, and they were not interested in doing that at this time, but I did offer that up, thinking that could all come in at the same time, but there's two owners left in the town that's south of, of Highway K.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Gallo?
Hey, I do. Wasn't Miller the guy we bought all the land from, for the park?
Yes.
Is it 57,000 an acre, 51,000 an acre, 47,000?
That's the land coming in tonight, is Mr. Miller's land.
The rest is land, okay.
Like to entertain a motion?
So moved, Kavieski.
Second, Ellis. Any further discussion? Roll, please.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Douglas?
Aye.
Alderman Rozek?
Aye.
Alderman Zappel?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Okay, motion, pass.
Thank you all, let's move on. A lot of good discussion, though, thank you. On a new business consider act on resolution 22-R3001, accepting the petition for direct annexation for the Robert Miller lands located on county trunk K. Mr. Gallo?
Thank you, it's been so long, I think the computer fell asleep. We have a petition, a resolution in your packet, for the direct annexation of land from the town of Oconomowoc into the city, there's two pieces, there are two separate pieces, with two separate tax key numbers, but all the land is vacant, they're located on the south corner here of Highway K and Highway P, it's under the same ownership, you can see right there, the size is, and I, it's about 40 acres, or a little more than that in size, the total area is actually 42.22 acres, I think this larger one is about 36, and this is about six acres roughly, for the master plan for this area, we did create the planning department, along with the applicants, a little neighborhood plan, this is a concept plan, it's not been approved by the council, you haven't seen it, but we've, we started being a little more aggressive, planning out this northeast area, the areas that we're talking about annexing tonight would be the future commercial, right on the corner of P and Z, it's the same depth of commercial as we have for Piggly Wiggly and the stuff north of that, and then a transitional area, and that other smaller piece, that's five or six acres, is right in this area, and that would be residential, so we have future land uses, I did contact all the other owners that are south of K to ask if they wanted to join in on this annexation, that'd be Mr. Rosenau, and, and the other gentleman here, and they were not interested in doing that at this time, but I did offer that up, thinking that could all come in at the same time, but there's two owners left in the town that's south of, of Highway K.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Gallo?
Hey, I do. Wasn't Miller the guy we bought all the land from, for the park?
Yes.
Is it 57,000 an acre, 51,000 an acre, 47,000?
That's the land coming in tonight, is Mr. Miller's land.
The rest is land, okay.
Like to entertain a motion?
So moved, Kavieski.
Second, Ellis. Any further discussion? Roll, please.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Douglas?
Aye.
Alderman Rozek?
Aye.
Alderman Zappel?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye. On a consider act resolution 22-R3006, approving support of the WEDC idle sites grant submission for the Olympia Fields redevelopment project, Mr. Duffy?
As part of our tax incremental agreement with Wongard Partners, we have agreed as partners to collaborate when funding opportunities become available, as you heard from Mr. Maroni earlier, the Wisconsin Department of Transportation is asking for additional improvements in Highway 67, based on the future growth that they anticipate of this area, not just within Olympia Fields, but likely to the west, one of the programs that is available is idle sites, idle sites grants are available for pieces of real estate, or lands that have been vacant, or idle, for more than, or for five years or more, of which this qualifies, so, basically, the resolution we're asking to approve is authorizing us to submit a grant in the amount of $250,000, which would be matched, $250,000, which would come from the TIF district, to help with these improvements.
Any questions for Mr. Duffy? Mr. Shell.
Whose fault is it, how come we're spending 500 grand that we weren't planning on, whose fault is it?
I don't believe it's anybody's fault, the Department of Transportation looks at these improvements, and what could happen to the west, and, and added them, not only here, but also to different intersections to the north.
How come we can't anticipate that, I mean, how, how is it that we don't know what, what statutory obligations we have on intersections?
Same reason we don't have a tunnel under 67.
Exactly, that's the exact issue, that's the problem.
And that's because your friends over in Madison are not trustworthy.
Mr. Frye?
So, when we go into a project, and, and work on the designs, the preliminary designs based on things that we're, we're making assumptions, you know, from other projects that we've seen, on this development, for some reason, the DOT decided to look further and further out than just what we needed for the traffic coming into this development, and because of that, it increased the number of cars, and so then they looked at changing the length of the, the turn lanes for stacking, and then that's what created all this extra expense, so we went in with a standard design of what we felt would work for this, through our engineers, and then the DOT came back and said, oh, no, they're looking at Pabst Farms, they're looking at all this other area that's way down, and they're saying, you've got to accommodate all of that, and so that's where this came from.
I'll just say, I, you know, and I'm not a professional in the area, but this is the kind of thing where, like, why I ask questions, and try to do the due diligence on the front end, because we end up with $500,000 bills that we have to pay now, and I got to listen to Alderman Rozek say we have to have five extra stories to pay it off, doesn't make any sense, we should have had this on, on the front end, so.
It's like skyscrapers, I think.
Any other questions for Mr. Duffy? Your frustration, Alderman Shellpepper, I think is shared by everyone sitting here, including the developer, and they're all good, that's great questions, I'm glad you brought it up, any other questions on this for Mr. Duffy? I'd like to entertain a motion? So moved, Ellis.
Second, Kavieski.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Douglas?
Aye.
Alderman Rozek?
Aye.
Alderman Zappel?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Consider act on resolution 22-R3008, acceptance of destination marketing grant, Mr. Duffy?
After our conversation December 21st, I reached out to the department administration, because there was some conversation about, could we use this, for, for these funds for a different purpose, they got back to me, although only not too long ago, so I shared that email with you, we would need to have a resolution or direction for staff to be able to sign the agreement, that's what the resolution is indicating, right now, we're still investigating what we could use the money for, what we do know is, we need to use it for destination marketing programs, and tourism promotion, we will continue to look at what those are, happy to bring those, you know, what I, what I said in the, in the documents is, we do have a destination marketing plan we'll look at, but what I do need is authorization to sign the agreement, so we have access to the money, I'm happy to bring back ideas and concepts that we come through, some of the things we've thought about, sub form of video promotion for the community, it's been 10 years since John the money. Happy to bring back ideas and concepts that we come through, some of the things we've thought about, sub form of video promotion for the community, it's been 10 years since John McGivern's been here, Discovery Wisconsin hasn't been here in 40 years, so we have different things we can possibly use the money for, but I first need the authorization to sign the agreement, and we have access to the money.
So, what you're proposing is signing the agreement, gives us access to money, but you are going to come back with options?
Correct.
And then council will make those decisions based on those options?
Correct.
Any further comments or questions for Mr. Duffy, Alderman Rozick?
No other money from the city right now on this deal, right? This is just the 47 grant from the state.
That is correct, yep.
I thought in your memo, you said that any final decision was going to be made by the tourism committee, not us, but.
Happy to bring it back to you.
Yeah, as long as you're okay.
I said work with the tourism commission.
Okay, on the thing, but I, I don't, this is going to shock you, Bob.
Uh-oh.
I don't really need to see it again. I thought the money, the signage tucked in the corner was a complete waste of money, I thought it was a bad idea, but if, the other things you've mentioned to me on this, in the, before, and whatever, you got a tourism committee to decide that, I don't necessarily need to see it again. At this point, we're not spending any more city money, and taxpayer money, and if we get it from the state, and it can help promote the city, and you've got a good idea, you know, just don't, don't put a billboard hidden behind trees, and I think I'll be okay with it.
That was a rendering.
Yeah, I know, I told you, I was going to surprise you.
We hadn't located the sign yet, out there.
Rock's in Pabst Farms.
Do entertain a motion, please. Kavieski?
Rozick, second.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Douglas?
Aye.
Alderman Rozick?
Aye.
Alderman Zappel?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
With no staff reports, are there any reports or comments from Alderman, Alderman Zappel?
Just want to wish a happy 50th birthday to my brother, Don, in Aurora, Colorado, hope you're watching.
Hope you're not.
Do you like your brother?
Does he get his ARP card at the age of 50, or not? I was just wondering.
No, 55, okay.
Any other comments, folks? If no more comments, there are no comments from the mayor, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Kavieski?
Second.[1791.37]